Okay, the light is on so we can get started here this afternoon folks. And welcome everyone and I'll call the meeting to order and would you like to join us in the Pledge Allegiance to the Flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay Allison, could we get a roll call please? Olson.
Here.
Sykes. Johnson.
Here.
Kellum.
Here.
Kupczynski.
Here.
Coburn.
Here.
Canopa. Here. And Sykes is excused.
Thank you.
Alright, so we're not going to be having our city council meeting on Wednesday night since we didn't have a lot of business to take care of, so we've kind of combined some items from the two meetings to this afternoon, which means a proclamation for this afternoon. And this is for Extra Mile Day, November 1st, 2018, whereas Albany is a community which acknowledges that a very special vibrancy exists within the entire community when its individual citizens collectively go the extra mile in personal effort, volunteerism, and service. And whereas Albany is a community which encourages its citizens to maximize their personal contribution to the community by giving themselves wholeheartedly and with total effort, commitment and conviction to their individual ambitions, family, friends, and community. And whereas Albany is a community which chooses to shine a light on and celebrate individuals and organizations within its community who go the extra mile in order to make a difference and lift up fellow members of their community. And whereas Albany acknowledges the mission of Extra Mile America to create 550 extra mile cities in America and is proud to support Extra Mile Day on November 1st, 2018. Now therefore I share in Canopa Mayor of the City of Albany to hereby proclaim November 1st, 2018 to be Extra Mile Day and urge each individual in the community to take time on this day to not only go the extra mile in his or her own life, but to also acknowledge all those who are inspirational in their efforts and commitment to make their organizations, families, community, country, or world a better place. In witness whereof, I hereon too sent my hand and cause the seal of the City of Albany to be affixed this 22nd day of October, 2018. So we have done this proclamation for quite a few years and it's just a great little message to get out, to be able to have folks do that, go that little extra mile because we have a great community that does do that effort. And part of that is just the City of Albany that does a lot of promotion throughout our community with a lot of our events and activities and also Rebecca with the Albany Visitors Association, you guys are one that go that extra mile, so thank you. Okay, next we have is business from the public, is there anyone here that has an item they would like to bring forward? Okay, not seeing anyone, thank you. And next is Buxton Customer Analytics update Seth.
Good afternoon, Council Mayor. I just wanted to make a brief introduction for Cheyenne Robinson who has taken some time to fly up from Texas to join us today and give you a bit of an overview of what we've accomplished this year with the partnership with Buxton Analytics, which started in March of this year, and give you a little bit of an insight into what we may do moving forward together. Cheyenne's our account rep with Buxton, I don't know if there's any other introduction that needs to be made, but I will pull up some slides here that she has and let Cheyenne take it from there.
Seth will be able to forward those to us?
Yes, absolutely. We were refining these and yeah, just as a reminder, she'll probably touch on this, but directly following this meeting at 6:00 PM, we'll be doing a public outreach session for small businesses in Albany who may or may not have interest in utilizing a marketing tool that Buxton has created called LSMX. And that tool is essentially a mobile platform for them to see who their current customers are, who potential customers are, and reach them directly through a variety of marketing platforms. So one of the emphasis is that, or emphasize that we've had in our partnership with Buxton is making sure to support existing business whilst also looking for opportunities to recruit other retailers that aren't currently here. So, can you give an advance with those chairs there?
Perfect, thank you Seth. As Seth mentioned, I'm Cheyenne Robinson, I'm your day-to-day account representative and point of contact with Buxton. Thank you honorable mayor and city council for having me here this afternoon, it's a pleasure to be here in your community and update you on our efforts to date. Now as you all are aware, we entered a three-year partnership in March, which you at that time seek to understand who your community really are and proactively work on a plan to attract retail, grow the amenities that you have here in your community, but also support the existing businesses that have already made the investment here in Albany, providing them with valuable information to help them grow. Now how we are able to meet those objectives, just as a reminder if there's anyone listening that may not be familiar with us and Buxton, it's through our experience of working with retailers over 24 years in site selection and market optimization, we've worked with over 4,000 clients to date. Now how we're able to support you as a community and all the clients that we work with across both the private and public sector is through the millions of dollars that we invest annually in data and technology, understanding how consumers behave, how they live their lives, and how they spend their dollars. But most importantly, the team that you have in place that allows you to answer your business specific questions, leveraging the data and technology that we have and applying the analytics from an economic development perspective, which is where we primarily focused here in your community. But we do have other services available, say for instance, you wanted to understand the citizens as patients and what are their healthcare needs and the community, that type of information is available as well. One tool that we have is a new capability that wasn't available when we first started our partnership, is the mobile analytics tool that we now have access to. Now that is a capability to where we could pinpoint downtown for instance and look at the specific customers to downtown, where those consumers reside and what are their shopping patterns and behaviors. Now that is an additional investment, so I'm not going to spend a lot of time on that today, but I did want to mention that as a new capability that you may be interested in in the future. All of our solutions at Buxton are focused on these three key factors, which is identifying who are your best customers, where are your best customers found, and the value back to your organization. So the value for an existing business owner, the value to a potential business owner here in Albany. So what we found for your community at a high level here, we found that on average your retail trade area is about 20 minutes, so you're seeing that 20-minute drive time there on the map. Now the reason you want to measure your trade area in minutes is because as customers, consumers are thinking in terms of how quickly can they get the goods and services that they need, and they are not thinking in political boundaries of codes or mileage ranges, they're thinking how quickly can I fill up at the gas tank, how fast is it for me to grab milk and eggs at the grocery stores. So at an overall level, we see around 20 minutes is where your retail trade area consists of that day-in, day-out, Monday through Sunday, sustainable consumer base. Now within this 20-minute trade area, you have a potential of over 84,000 customers for a retail business here in your community. You have high population growth as well as household growth here within your market. But it's important to not just look at demographics because that just lays the foundation of understanding your customer base. You want to get beyond that and understand what we call the psychographics, which tells you how consumers live their lives and spend their dollars, which is the actual level of detail for a business. So some of the prevalent consumer types that we see within your retail trade area range from upper-middle-class boomers that are more nature enthusiasts, they are more practical shoppers, and if you are a business trying to reach these households, they prefer to be reached through traditional and new media channels. And then you have a mix of empty nesters with outdoor interests that like to shop at local stores as well as discount department stores and also prefer to be reached through traditional media. And a mix of mature couples with quiet leisure lifestyles and strong community groups, many of them live in the same home for over 20 years, and they like to shop at mid-market and discount chains and also prefer traditional media. As well as retirees with quiet lifestyles, many are involved in local community groups and volunteer groups here within Albany. Now they're not as big on shopping, but they do like to be reached through traditional media if you are trying to target these households. And then lastly, a strong mix of young singles and families that are just getting started, very active leisure lives, they like to shop at mid-market retailers and prefer digital retail as well. Now these five groups out of 19 different customer types make up 73% of the households within your 20-minute trade area. Now in addition to understanding your retail trade area, we also leverage transactional level data to understand the types of customers spending here and uncovering the impact on your economy, as well as the profile of type of visitors that you have spending dollars. So getting the on the 20 minutes and understanding across the country, what are the type of customers that are spending here within Albany. So here we see of 62% of the spending in your community occurs from non-residents. We also found, I mentioned 20 minutes is that overall retail trade area, but we see that the day tripper, so those that are not necessarily staying as frequently within hotels but are still coming in and shopping within your market, that day tripper resides within 25 to 65 minutes from your community. Now the map that you're seeing here are the top zip codes within the region that are spending dollars in your city. Some of the top markets range from Lebanon to Salem as well as Bend and Roseburg. Now the top five consumer types I mentioned previously, those are still very prevalent within the Pacific Northwest visitors that are spending dollars in Albany. Those five that we mentioned before make up 47% of the Pacific Northwest visitors spending dollars in your community. Now you also have a mix of these four groups that make up 33% of the households spending dollars in your market. These range from established couples with sophisticated taste, preferring classic fashions, and despite their busy lifestyles, they like to be reached through traditional media, as well as some of the wealthiest households in the U.S. that like to try new experiences and prefer luxury products, as well as high-end retails and traditional media and radio. And you also have a mix of the last two groups that prefer to do their shopping planning online before they actually go in and make that trip. So as existing business owners, this is very important to understand the type of customers that you have, how they like to be reached, how you should be targeting them, and how you should inform your creative messaging as you're trying to market and better improve your business and increase traffic.
So Cheyenne, could I get it clarified, so all of the pink would be shoppers that come to Albany to shop, is that online also, or is that just physically coming in?
That's just looking at physical in-store purchases. So that's exactly correct mayor, and the pink shown here on the map, those are zip codes that are spending high percent of dollars overall within your community.
Wow, so I'm really, I'm surprised at the one way up above Seattle in there, so yeah, because that's quite a distance, but that's good.
It's saying people want to come visit him from Bothell.
No, it must be.
I do also have a question. The pink areas, is there a further designation of who spends the most from where?
Yes, so I can actually, I don't have that.
When we get there?
Yes, I don't have that number offhand, but I could tell you within the Seattle market for instance, if the visitor's team was trying to target that area, which zip codes have a higher percentage of spending and which have a lower percentage of spending here in your community, and also where is there a higher concentration of the people that look like those that are spending dollars.
So this would indicate that most of the people that come to Albany and spend above X level come from those areas?
Correct, so these are higher percentages, yes.
But my question is really, I mean you see the zip codes that they're from, is there some kind of delineation that shows where the most dollars come from for Albany, not just the zip codes, but the locations where they come from? So while we may get a whole lot from Seattle or from Roseburg, what percentage comes from Roseburg and what percentage comes from Millersburg, Albany, Corvallis, Lebanon? Is that available was my thought?
Yes, that is available. I can tell you at a high level that information, which would be within 50 miles of Albany, that people that reside within 50 miles outside of your city, that makes up 41%. Those that are living within the Pacific Northwest beyond 50 miles makes up 12% of spending, and then nationally, so outside of the Pacific Northwest region, makes up 9% of spending there.
So 60% closer than 50 miles? Yeah, okay, thank you.
And on your map where you have the pink, does that just end right at the border to California or is it extending over it?
So this map in particular is just looking at the Pacific Northwest topic codes.
Okay.
So this is a very high-level look to the transactional spending here in your community. Once we have that full understanding of the consumers and how they live their lives, how they spend their dollars, to have that complete picture, we then took a look further at your retail trade area to understand the unmet demand and possible opportunities, looking at what we call a leakage and surplus report or a gap analysis on the major retail sector. Now keep in mind, this is looking at 20 minutes, so this does get beyond your community, it's looking at that total retail trade area demand. On the left-hand side or under one on this chart is showing a leakage, so unmet demand, and on the right-hand side is showing what we call a surplus, so where you're doing exceptionally well in the market. Some of the areas that you're experiencing leakage range from health and personal care stores, which is around the 60% unmet demand, clothing and accessories around 50% unmet demand, looking at food and beverage, 40% unmet, so that's 40% leaving the retail trade area, and then in food service and drinking places, you also have a 40% unmet demand that's leaving the retail trade area. So what we did in addition to this is knowing those gaps that are in your market and then finding and identifying the retailers to help fill those gaps that also like to locate around the type of customers and businesses that you already have here within your market. Some of those retailers range from quick service and family restaurants such as Sonic as well as fast casuals such as Mod Pizza, Chipotle, as well as sit-down dining Cracker Barrel, and clothing and apparel, as well as cosmetic stores, Ulta, and health stores as well. So we identified over 20 potential businesses for attraction efforts here in your community. This is an example of some of those that we've identified here. Now I'm not telling you that these businesses are absolutely going to locate in your market, what we are telling you with this information is that as you're trying to attract and fill the gaps in your market, these are the brands that are most promising to attract because they are commonly locating around the type of customers that you boast and the conditions that are present within your retail trade area. Now not only have we identified these brands, we have also created market validation for each one of these businesses, we have sent the initial correspondence to the retailers, and Seth has been starting engagement with each of these brands to tell the story of your community and why they should be considering a location here in Albany.
Sonic already has land here.
I find some of these interesting, one of them was the auto parts stores on a previous slide, and it seems like we've got three or four or five. And then you mentioned Mod Pizza, which I'm not familiar with, but again, I think of all the pizza places around town, it's.
Sonic has tried to be here before.
It's just interesting, you're crunching data and that's what comes up, so it's just interesting.
Definitely makes sense if you heard Sonic's looked before and seen them on the list.
I don't know, they may own the land yet, I don't know, but they were trying to go in at the corner of Goldfish Farm in 20.
Yes.
Oh. For the oil park trucks.
Is there any attempt at all to delineate businesses based on the type of wages they pay? If there are a lot of, you know, fast food type things, it's low-wage jobs, it really isn't helping the overall economy other than putting people to work, which is a good thing, no question about it, but I'm seeing, I'm not inferring.
Yes, the question is who, who is it that's now unemployed? And there are a whole lot of folks that don't have job skills for a job at Somed or Wachang or, you know, but they do have job skills for a Sonic or could be trained very quickly.
Just wishful thinking on my part.
What some of our communities will do is actually leverage, we have an online analytics system where all of the market validation for these businesses is actually deployed, which city staff has access to, and some of the tools that are available in that system are healthcare insights. So that would be working towards the higher wage jobs that you had mentioned, and that information can be leveraged for those conversations with healthcare prospects. Now in addition to the attraction efforts, we are also focused on business retention. So this evening, we're going to be focused on sharing with existing businesses the resources that are available, which are through our online analytics system. These are some of the example questions that we can help answer. No one, one, two, too far ahead, but these are some of the questions that we can help answer through our analytics platform for existing businesses. This is not the limit to the questions that we can answer, but does give you a sense of how we can help your existing businesses, so if you have a small business that's wanting to expand into a new industry, knowing where to start, you have an existing business that's wanting to expand their merchandising, knowing the type of items that your consumers are more likely to prefer here in the market, as well as if they're trying to understand who their customers are and better grow their consumer base in targeting those households. The LSMX or local store marketing tool that's available allows them to do just that. So one example that I'm going to share tonight, which I'll share with you all today, is if you have a small business that's wanting to get started and not sure quite where to start. So in this example that we'll talk through, we have a small business owner that owns an existing garden center and is trying to decide between a hardware store or a home center to open here in the community. They don't have a business name for that concept yet, they do have some business experience already. So looking at the two concepts from home supply and hardware, we can see that there is a leakage for hardware, whereas there's a surplus for home centers. So that tells us at an overall directional level of that there's more demand and more opportunity for hardware stores. Now it's not saying there's no room for more home centers to open in your community, but it does provide that directional sense of if she's looking to, if you have he or she's looking to open up a new business, that hardware is going to be, have a higher opportunity because there's unmet demand that's leaving the trade area currently.
Excuse me, when you determine that there is a need or is not a need, do you do it by SIC code or?
So we actually use NICS codes for understanding the different categories of business, so when we look at the leakage and surplus, this is worked by NICS code, so how the business is classified, and which the NICS code would be the highest, where they have the highest revenue is how that system is classified in business type. So home centers, paint stores, this is classified through the NICS code, and then understanding the demand that's currently there for that type of business or demand that's currently being met.
Nick, thank you.
And then here we're looking at the consumer preferences and buying habits in your market. Not listed here, but one thing we also know is that 61% of the households in the trade area are homeowners. This also shows that 18% of the households are more likely to have added an additional room in the last 12 months, and then at the very end, it shows that consumers are 24% less likely to have hired a professional painter or someone outside the home to do painting. So at an overall level, what this tells us is that there's a demand for a hardware store, and if in that entrepreneur's efforts in opening up a store, they should keep in mind the do-it-yourself mentality and mindset that's very prevalent here within the customer trade area, and also look at having in their merchandise efforts, the essentials for home remodeling. So this is just one of the many examples of how the information can be applied for existing businesses. Well in summary, what we provide you is market research and support available to help your existing businesses grow, help with current and potential developments as well, which all leads to improving the quality of life, helping you retain businesses and helping you attract businesses, which is going to increase property tax revenue over time and long-term here within the market. Now our next steps from here, I mentioned that we'll have a meeting this evening with existing businesses to give them a sense of what's available to help them grow. In March, we'll be refreshing our analysis, seeing if there's been any changes in what we've uncovered. We'll be adding additional 20 retailers to our efforts to add towards, working towards the goal of increasing the amenities here in your community and filling the gaps and leakage in the market as well, as continuing to bolster our efforts and support for existing businesses. Now at this time, I'd love to answer any questions that anyone of council may have for myself or for Seth as well and our efforts together.
Probably for Seth or Jorge, will the analytics platform be open to the general public to access or just entrepreneur, or what kind of requirements will be made to allow somebody to access that?
Yeah, it's a great question. So specifically this analytic and marketing tool, she's mentioned a few times, is LSMX. That's, we have 25 licenses through the base package that you purchased. So right now, tonight, we'll judge how much interest there is, if there's more than 25, we could explore other options or draw names out of a hat, we're not exactly sure how we'll do that yet, but we're limited to 25 at this point. And there's been discussion about making that available in a number of different ways, so we'll explore the interest this evening.
And that's going to be where?
Either here if we're done by six or in the municipal court if we're not done by six, this evening, directly following this meeting, yeah.
Okay, other questions?
Thank you.
Yep, very good information, so yeah, I really like seeing about how much of the dollars that are coming to our community are really not just right here in our local area, so that is amazing to find out, but that's great news, but thank you, thank you Cheyenne.
Thank you for having us.
Seth, anything else?
Anything else to add unless there are other questions?
Alright.
What's different about your face?
Excuse me?
What's different about your face?
Oh my god, I look like I'm 12, does that?
Oh maybe, I was just wondering, you cut a beard off or something, I'm sorry.
About every two years for my wife and then I grow it right back.
Okay, okay.
Oh, he's turning red too.
Lean that to me.
Okay, next item is review of finance policies, and Gina?
Thank you, we're going to take these a little out of order, since Steve Earlings is here, our insurance agent, he's going to do risk management, he has a risk management report first that he'll present.
Hello Steve.
I'm a re-mayor and councilman, I sit in front of you every year to go through your insurance program for, kind of do a five-year history. So on page one is just kind of a summary of all your coverages that you have in place for the current year and the last five years, I'll just go through again some highlights on these pages. The main reason we have our property with travelers is because they offer $50 million of dedicated earthquake coverage to the city. City County Insurance Services, who write your liability program, can only provide a $10 million limit that's shared with all the other cities and counties for the state, so it's kind of a crapshoot when it comes down if there's a large earthquake loss, how much you would actually collect. So we've taken the initiative and purchased $50 million dedicated limits specifically for you.
Didn't that come up last year? We made that switch last year?
It's been a few years, it went up in the, to $50 million in 2014-15, it was $25 million then we boosted it up to $50 million in 2014-15. The premiums jumped up a little bit in the 17-18 year because of the, we had the builder's risk coverage for the fire station, police station on for that period of time, and then we rolled it off on to being occupied, and then we had to take off the old location, so there was some transition in values, but overall, it was about a $23 million increase in total values for the city, so that kind of took a little bit of a jump, but we covered the builder's risk while it was being done and also the completed values once we worked was being done and also the completed values once we worked with finance on that.
And there weren't any claims against that?
No, no.
Builder's risk policy?
No, it went fine. We'll just kind of go through to page three that shows kind of the history of the premiums and losses. Again, the premiums took a increase from 16, 17, 17, 18 because of the values, went up $23 million. Deductibles historically have been at $10,000, it's not. We test going up to higher deductibles every year, but it's just not worth the savings in the premium. And the only property loss you've had was in the 13-14 year where lightning damage to senior center and burnt out a panel, electrical panel there. Core liability, unfortunately, the premiums keep escalating. City County has had some tough years, those last few years with law enforcement and employment practices claims. And because of the pool situation, they're trying, you know, trying to get some stability in the rate structure. We did go up to, from a $75,000 annual deductible to $125,000 in the 17-18 year, primarily to save premium. It was going to cost us another $30,000 in premium, so it's worth taking the additional risk to take the higher deductible. The 125 is the maximum that you would have to pay out of pocket for, to reimburse CIS for any claims that you had incurred during that period of time. And overall, you've done really well. If you look at the losses in, you know, 14-15, you had $10,000, 15-16, $16,000, and 16-17, $8,000. So you've more than made up for having that deductible. You've recouped, you know, the savings by keeping the losses low. In the 17-18 year, you, you have some losses that are reserved for legal costs, but those haven't been paid out yet.
So if you said this, I apologize, and you can repeat it, but, so you're bumping the annual deductible up to 125,000.
Right.
What did we pay out last year?
So in 16-17, you paid out $8,000 of the losses.
Okay.
17-18, you have right now 71, but most of that hasn't been paid out. It's more in reserves for attorney's fees. So we, we view that that will probably come down to probably be in the $50,000 range. Again, you're more than making up the credit. You get a $93,000 credit on the premiums by taking a $125,000 deductible. So you're more than making up that savings and having that increased exposure.
It just, it doesn't seem like it's any different. Your personal finances, you're always trying to look for the sweet spot there.
Yeah, again, with city county, you kind of have to look at what your losses are. Historically, you've had great losses. That's why it was really easy to take that higher limit and not, you know, feel comfortable that you'll at least make back the additional premium that you saved on.
I don't think we've had great losses.
No. That must be reasonable, Mel. So again, overall, you know, the premiums, we're trying to keep in line with what the, by using the deductible to offset some of those increases. Losses by department on page five. Again, most of this is, this includes defense costs. So in the police department, a bulk of those losses are pending reserves on some open claims. Sewer sidewalks, streets, transit really have had low losses compared to other cities your size. And again, the city manager's office has had some defense costs relating to some homeless issues that have been outstanding as far as that goes. But other than that, it's been pretty quiet from that standpoint. On auto liability, again, relative to other cities your size, the 13-14 year was the only year that you really had a lot of auto losses that exceeded the norm. But for the last, you know, few years, you've really done well in keeping your losses relatively minor. So it's, it's been good from that standpoint. The savings have been good. And again, you had very slight increase in your premium from 16-17 to 17-18 because of your loss ratio being so low. Auto losses by department on page seven. Again, typically, fire and police have the largest losses of any public entity because you're, again, usually providing 24/7 service. You're using, you know, sirens and speed to get to where you're at, and sometimes you run into vehicles. And so that's reflected in some of these losses. There's nothing significant loss, but just a number of times where we've either entered an intersection without it being cleared or being kept, you know, while we're trying to respond to the fire. So if it does happen in, in a city your size, this is pretty normal for what you see in auto losses. Auto physical damage, again, historically, we've been pretty good for auto physical damage. The 16-17 year, we had a street sweeper burn up, which cost us $50,000. So that's kind of a blimp in what happened in that year. But overall, it's primarily small fender benders backing into posts. Police and fire have those, those posts just appear out of nowhere behind their vehicle. Been smacking some posts. But overall, it's been a good history. We did increase deductibles in order to save some, some costs, so that's been reflected. If you look at the 15-16 year, the premium was 71,000, but by taking the deductibles up to 1,000, we saved significant dollars, you know, from that standpoint, $16,000 in savings just in the increase in the deductibles. Auto physical damage by department, again, police and fire had significant, public works with that one street sweeper loss, had the $50,000 hit. So page 10 kind of gives you a five-year overall history, property liability losses. You average about 24 claims a year. Current costs are around 93.9, about $94,000 for average, about close to $4,000, 3,900 per loss, per claim. So that's pretty typical. I think that, you know, once we roll the 13-14 year up, where you had the most of your claims costs, those averages will go down pretty significantly. The next two pages, pages 11 and 12, show you workers' compensation. We also work with the city on your workers' compensation plan and kind of show, you know, in this case, your, your experience is not as good. Your experience mod has gone up from 0.75 in the 13-14 year to 1.16. But that typically means anything below one means you're better than cities your size. Anything over one means your, your experience is worse than an agency your size. What we've been seeing, the claim count has, has come down in the 16-17 and 17-18 year. So that's good, but the severity has not been kind of following that. In the 16-17 year, you've had 651,000 of losses. In the 17-18 year, you've had, you know, 327,000 losses. So, you know, those, those years are kind of, especially the 17-18 year, it's kind of new, so you're not sure if those losses are going to be going up. We had one significant claim for the fire department in the 16-17 year, which drove a lot of those costs up from one claim. Turning to page 12, again, summary of claims by department. Fire department has over $1.2 million in workers' comp losses in the last five years. Fall of life, laser, 613,000. In the, we have quarterly safety committee meetings that we review claims and, and looking at causes of some of these losses. Police and fire, a number of them have been training related, and so we're working on developing different training, you know, remedies to make sure that we're not injuring our police and fire officers while they're in training. The fire loss also included one that was a cancer presumption loss. The state passed a law that said any firefighter who is deemed to have gotten cancer in, in their lifetime is, is tagged back to being on the job, so it's considered a workers' comp injury. It's called the, you know, the cancer presumption law that they passed starting in '14. And this is one of the first cases that CIS has had of that. So this, this one case under fire was, was about a $400,000 loss that we made a settlement on to the injured worker to pay for their future medical costs, but that's factored into it. So it's again, something that typically we wouldn't have had as a city unless the legislature passed this law that said it's doomed to have been work-related if it was cancer to a firefighter.
Any kind of cancer?
Any kind of cancer.
Wow. That's stupid.
Well, that's your legislature.
No, that's their legislature. I didn't know.
Yeah, so anyway. Any questions?
On page one of your, of the deal, it talks about the scheduled property insurance. I'm struck, I am, I don't know if it's been asked before, the earthquake insurance is 50 million max, but boiler and machinery is 100 million? What's the difference between?
So boiler and machinery is if you had a, let's say at the public works facility, if you had a motor go out or some type of mechanical breakdown, either electrical breakdown. So it's, it's again, very seldom that you'd have a loss that would exceed $100 million for that type of loss. So it's not just, earthquake is covered for all facilities up to 50 million, but boiler and machinery is capped at 100 million. And there's no savings to go down to 50 million or 25 million. It's just travelers build it in at 100 million.
Okay. Well, it would be, I mean, if you had an earthquake and it damaged the building that that equipment was in, more likely to damage that equipment.
So it's a different type of loss. Boiler and machinery is more of a mechanical breakdown, electrical failure.
Okay.
Those, you know, explosion of a pressure vessel, those types of things would be covered under that boiler and machinery loss. So we, they put it at 100 million primarily to cover an explosion loss. So something, you know, if you have something under pressure that explodes or can damage that whole building, and it could be up to 100 million to replace it. So that's why they do it.
Using your example, if there was a major explosion and it blew up several homes several blocks away, what would that?
That's liabilities coverage versus property. So this is property damage due to damage to your own property from this explosion.
Thank you.
We don't even have $100 million worth of.
That was what I was thinking.
Yeah, they, they just throw that limit in just because, you know.
Yeah, okay.
Good question.
Ensure my left hand for $50 billion.
Any other questions, Steve?
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Yeah, great report. So, thank you, Steve. All right, Gina?
Okay, next, let's move on to the investment policy. Allison left a updated memo for you at your seats. There's not going to be any changes this year to our investment policy. Our advisor wasn't able to make it today. And so she's putting the changes off, which are mainly housekeeping, until next year. There's no additional risk for us. It's just changing some language to clarify some things to go along with the Oregon Short Term Fund Board. So it's the same as it was last year. Does anybody have any questions about the? Yeah.
Page seven talks about you won't invest in 144A securities. I didn't know what that was. I was just kind of curious. Private placement securities?
So this is part of the changes that she's going to make for next year. So this one would not, she wanted to be here so she could answer specific questions about it. And since she's not, we're not making these changes on pages four through eight tonight, this, this year. Instead, you should have this other memo that's a lot shorter.
Got it.
Yeah.
Advisor to advisor.
A lot of it's just, just housekeeping type items.
Welder and welder, boiler and machine, the other person.
Any other questions about investment policy? Okay, so moving on to the financial policy, the only change that we have this year is we are changing our capitalization threshold from $5,000 to $10,000. For federal reimbursements, it will remain at 5,000. But it's going to save a lot of time in tracking. 5,000 is just, is very low in the amounts of money that we spend. So that's why we have opted to, to make that, that change. Is there any questions about that?
Gina, can you say when the 5,000 is established? How old is that level?
You know, I'm not, I don't know. I'm not sure when it is. I can, I can find that out and get back to you on that. I was just talking to somebody from another entity recently, and they have a capitalization threshold of $100. So every single desk, every single chair that's $100 or over gets capitalized for them. But we've had 5,000 for a long time, but I don't know how long exactly.
More than 10 years.
Probably, yes.
Yeah, more than 10 years. 5,000 is 10,000.
But I can, you know, if you're interested, I can find that out and get back to you.
But this is tied into depreciation of those capital assets?
Yes.
So are you still depreciating things of $5,000 or less?
We won't. We're going to, only for federally reimbursed items. So we will do big adjustments this year. It actually is really good because it coincides with the beginning of MUNIS. So when we enter all of the assets into MUNIS, we can do any adjustments that we need to do at that time.
Okay.
Any other questions about the financial policies?
Any other questions? Okay, is that it, Gina?
That is all I have.
Okay. So council, you can take one motion on this for the financial policies, which would be a resolution on page nine, 23, and 30.
Move to adopt the resolution, adopting an investment policy and reviewing resolution number 6642.
Second.
All right, and any discussion? So, okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. All right, thank you, Gina. So, thank you, Allison.
He only did 6642.
Oh, did you just do 6642?
Yeah, I just wanted a.
Oh, you just did one, Erby?
We need to do the.
Okay, so the motion you only did for the one?
Right, we have to do them individually.
Oh, okay. I had to ask that we could do all of them at once, but, so, I'm sorry, didn't you? Okay, so now we need to do another motion, and this would be on the resolution on page 23 for 6643.
Move for the adoption of resolution number 6643.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, now 6644.
Move to adopt resolution 6644.
Second.
Okay, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, now we got them. All right, thank you. Thank you for catching that. So, all right, next item would be approval of contract increase. And is that Stacy's item?
Victim number three.
For this item, staff is recommending that council approve a contract increase for the Backwash Ponds Improvement Project. The Backwash ponds are located adjacent to the Cala Cuya River near the Vine Water Treatment Plant. The ponds store water that's used to, to, excuse me, clean the filters that treat water at the plant and then before the water is discharged to the Cala Cuya River. This project includes work to excavate the Backwash ponds in order to reshape them and then also place new liners in the ponds that help to prevent seepage into the adjacent soil and then also into the Cala Cuya River. The contractor that was awarded this contract, DNI Excavating, they completed excavation work on the first pond to the finished grade, and they encountered extremely poor soil. What staff is requesting this contract increase for is work to be able to remove 12 inches of the, the poor soil and replace it with a reinforced rock layer. The cost to complete the additional work is $46,800, and it would result in an increase to the construction contract of 29.8%. So work has been completed on the first pond, and weather permitting, we hope to start work on the second pond next week. There are adequate reserves in the Water Capital Project Fund to cover the contract increase. Are there any questions?
Yeah, Rich?
Originally, when this, when this contract was let, I presume there was a Originally, when this, when this contract was let, I presume there was a, some kind of investigation done as to what the subsurface was like?
There was. We installed, I'm gonna get this word wrong, since I'm on Phil that he's, he'someters, in order to investigate the water table, and then we've also done excavation on potholes. So the, we were surprised to encounter the.
But it was, we went ahead and did it, and the contractor took our word for whatever it was?
The, excuse me, the excav, the.
Wait, now, we checked out the base, and then the contractor took our, took our investigation as, as their baseline?
Yeah, they based their bids on the information we provided.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, other questions? Okay, what would you like to do with this item?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you, Stacy. Okay, I'm going to move the executive session to the very end so we can go ahead and do business from the council and the city manager report. So, business from the council. So, Bessie?
I have one thing. I was contacted by one of our constituents, Jan Grosso, and he's actually contacted me a couple times and sent me the pictures, but this is on, and I'll send it down. Some of you may have seen, I know Rich has, is some maintenance that needs to be done on the back of the library. And I promised him I would bring it up and, you know, let the city manager look at it, which I'm sure he's seen too, but he just wants to make sure that we keep the maintenance up because of the donation that we got. He thinks that the person, the donator, would, you know, want to make sure we keep everything, you know, right up, right up to par. And so I just wanted to bring that up, and I'm sure, I don't know if, oops, maintenance will, you know, if it's on their schedule, or if they know about it, or whatever. I went, I did a site visit on it, and it's in a lot better shape than some places are, but anyway. He thinks it should be painted or whatever done with it now to make sure that it doesn't get into worse shape. And that's all.
It does look like it needs, needs some sprucing up there, so, yep, thank you. Thank you, Bessie, for bringing that forward. Anything else?
Nope, that's all.
Bill?
Just a comment on the risk management report that Steve gave, and this is directed more for Peter, but, you know, Steve made the comment, some of these things are pretty normal, and I was looking at the, at the police in particular, 74% of the torque cost, 50% of the auto liability, 25% of the auto damage. You know, I get that, and looking at the experience mod rate, it did drop from 1.13 down to 1.16. And I gave my little talk a year or two ago when this experience mod rate went up, because in my previous business, we had customers, if your experience rate was over one, you could not bid on the project. A good example is Intel. We could not bid on their electrical work if their tar safety rating was, was over one, which, you know, you want to be below one. My point being, I don't ever want to hear that, you know, this is pretty normal. I think that it's an ongoing goal to always lower costs, lower accidents, lower, you know, people getting hurt, lower your experience. I mean, I compare it to the game of golf. You'll never be good enough, you know? If you par the course, could you have gotten a birdie, you know? And we did go through a similar thing in, in our business years ago, and one of the things we did is similar to what Steve was saying, you start tracking these things and kind of drilling down into what is the cause. And just as an example, that, as an example, not that this would work for the city, but the type of thing I'm talking about, we found out that we were having a lot of hand injuries. Cuts, pinches, scrapes, that type of thing. Company instituted a mandatory glove policy, furnished gloves to all the employees, and all those injuries went away. So I think there's ways to look at the way we operate and look for some common occurrences that, you know, that happen, and see if there's, there's ways to correct it. Now, I think those procedures are, processes are ongoing, and I think a year or two ago, we even talked about hiring a safety officer, if you will, and Steve mentioned having quarterly safety meetings. I think you should have them more often than that. But, you know, you get safety people, they can talk all day on how you get buy-in from the employees and suggestions and so forth and so on, but it just bothered me when he said, "Yeah, this is pretty normal." I'd never want to get to the point where I start accepting these as, "Yeah, it's gonna happen." You know, that's, because in most cases, it is avoidable, and it's through dissecting those incidences that you say, "How could that have been prevented?" In our case, had you been wearing gloves, would this have happened? No. All right, there you go. Put your gloves on.
You'll recall that Chuck Perino was hired about the same time I was as our half-time safety officer, and he shares that the other half of his duties are with emergency management. So, yeah, well, he used to have a full-time one, but nevertheless, those quarterly safety meetings, he does head them up. All along that we got a silver award this year from CIS and a bronze award last year, and I think a lot of that, you know, Chuck was very reluctant, understandably, to take any credit for the bronze award because he just got here. But for the silver award, he's been here over a year now, and they have been taking measures to measure. And I would go out on a limb and say that next year, when Mr. Erwings comes back, it'll be even better than, than this year.
Well, and like I say, the experience rating actually, you know, went up 1.13, 1.16, so that's, and so did the number of claims. So that, it's curious that those things happen, they're just, you know, curious, but hopefully something can be done.
Got us all? Thank you.
Okay, good.
Yeah, I want to say thank God for city water. Trying to pump water out of my well with a pitcher pump on my back porch, and it's gone dry, so it's been a really dry year. Must be dry like it was back in the 70s, because it's sucking air again. Hasn't, that hasn't happened for a long time.
Wow. Yeah. Okay, all right, Rich?
Had a constituent talk to me, and this is a small business, they have a drive-up window, and the employees were complaining that they'd open the window to the drive-up window, and it would smell like urine. And he's, what? He'd go over there, and he didn't smell it. Finally, it happened enough times that, yeah, he smelled it. He went out, took bleach outside, around in the parking lot, took care of the problem, kept coming back. So he looked on his cameras, and a car pulls up, 4:00 in the morning, and a guy gets out and goes and relieves himself, and a woman gets out of the other side and adjusts things and relieves herself, and they stand around for a little while, and they get back in their rig, and they leave. This happens every night. This wasn't a one-time thing. So we called the police. The police come, and they sit there, and they miss them by 10 minutes, or they, you know. Finally, there's the police and these people come in contact with each other, they're given tickets. They ask them why. Well, it was a handy place for us to stop. Now, I don't know about you, but on what planet would that be okay? Well, so, they get a ticket, they go to court. Presumptive fine for that is $2,500. One gets a $50 court cost, and the other gets dismissed. Now, this wasn't something that, oh gee, I took a diuretic and I, I gotta pull over. This is, they did it on purpose numbers of times. What makes me unhappy about this is this seems to be an ongoing thing, and I don't know what the, I don't know what the solution is. I mean, in the past, we've had trouble with small amounts of fine or small, short, short jail stays for people who keep doing the same thing over and over and over. I'm unhappy about it. My constituent, of course, is unhappy about it. Now, the people no longer stop by. I mean, they've been, they've been trespassed, and so if they do, it's then criminal trespass. But to my way of thinking, there should have been something more than, than court costs for people who did this on purpose, and, I don't know, I'd like to, at some point, know why, have some kind of investigation at some level to see how come. It just doesn't seem reasonable to me. And here are the reports. You go and pass them down. Peter?
So you're saying it doesn't seem reasonable for the behavior of the person or for the court?
Well, it doesn't seem reasonable for the, who would think that would be okay? Right?
Right.
But also, then, I don't think it's reasonable that the court says, "Well, gee, they did it. The people stayed up all night, they spent hundreds of dollars cleaning things up. They do this over and over and over and over, and the police come by and spend a bunch of time, and then he just says, 'Okay, well, never mind. Here's 50 bucks.'" Well, they spent a lot more, they spent that much probably on bleach.
So you're saying to have it reviewed on the court cost?
Have it, have the situation reviewed.
Okay.
It's, it seems unreasonable. The outcome seems unreasonable. That's all I have.
I agree.
Do you just have a comment, Mayor?
Yeah.
Is this something that you're concerned about, this particular case, or overall, the work the police is doing in the dismissal of the cases, and you want us to look further into that?
Well, I guess from my, you know, I've heard in the past, and I have friends with their police, and they seem to think that not enough happens, and of course, from their perspective, I mean, if you're, you go out there and you do a bunch of work, and, and you, okay, yeah, we cut, cut the guy, the guy was doing whatever it was they were doing, and that's an infraction of this or that or the other kind of time, and then nothing happens about it. Well, I mean, it seems like there needs to be something that happens about it.
You know, we hear from Judge Scott once a year, and he made the comment last time that, you know, if somebody's homeless and breaks the law, he's talking to give them, give them a big fine that he knows they can't pay. Here's a case where they're driving up every night, they're not homeless, they have some means, and.
Well, they're working. That's their job right then. They're out there in delivery.
My point is, it's not consistent with what Judge Scott was telling us.
Right.
So I think probably the council needs direct staff to do a report on cases that have been dismissed and have Peter assign it to us so we can actually work on that, if that's something the council wants as a whole.
We'll take that for action unless you have alternative direction.
Okay. All right, that is, okay, Ray?
On a more positive note, Friday afternoon, Dick and I installed some fundraising signs down at the Cumberland Church, and took some photographs, and invite people to drive around the roundabout, and you can see them, and go to savercumberland.org if you want to get involved in trying to help make that happen. It was a fun afternoon, took us only about an hour to put those up, and hopefully we'll see some bigger and better things happening in the near future.
Great, thank you so much. Thank you so much for working on that, too, so. Okay, the only thing I have, when Dick brought up about water, it reminded me, as this weekend, our hot water tank went out, which was about 25 years old, and I thought we had, I asked him, "Are there much sediment in it?", and they said there wasn't any, and we have never serviced it, you know, where they say you should drain your hot water tank every year and clean it, we'd never have done it, so I figured it had to been sediment. So it kind of shows we have very good, clean water in the city to keep that hot water tank with no sediment in it after 25 years. So kudos, Stacy, we got some, and Chris, we got some good water, so, but yeah, so, and we got some life out of that hot water tank, it looks like, but. Marilyn, our next meeting would be November 7th? We're having, what was that?
November 3rd.
November 3rd, okay. So that is the week then. That following weekend would be Veterans Day Parade, and I wanted to remind all of you that we are signed up for the Veterans Day Parade and with the trolley, so let me know then who all would be attending on that.
And the parade is on Saturday, the 10th.
It's on Saturday, the 10th.
At that point, there would be somebody that may have been, well, somebody from Ward Two would be, having been just elected. Are they going to be invited to come along? I don't know, is that policy thing?
We haven't in the past, I can't remember, were you, do you remember if you were when you were first elected?
I don't, I don't think so.
I wasn't either. It's typically been the sitting council.
The ones that are sitting, okay, yeah. I couldn't quite remember, but I was thinking it. I didn't think it was, because I don't remember having more in the trolley than what we.
Well, it's not like there's enough room in the trolley, though.
Probably the same location for staging?
Probably. We won't know till that week, you know, where we're at, but we're most likely will be in the same location, but we'll be meeting that week, so I'll have more information by then. Marilyn?
Correction, the work session is on November 5. I was thinking it had to December 3rd.
Okay.
When we have another one.
All right, all right, so I'll update you that week then, but I just wanted to put it on your radar for that, okay?
Is Ray gonna take a movie of the parade?
I hope so.
Yeah, I've had people say they appreciated it.
Oh, I've had people say we need to change, and.
Well, if it's a new.
We've seen it many a times, yeah.
Something more than just his movie, is that what you're saying?
It's good to have.
They didn't enjoy the movie.
Song and dance.
24 hours a day, yeah. Okay, and then, Peter?
Yes, two good things for you. I just passed out this document to you, and.
That's really nice.
Summer already seems like it was quite a while ago, but this is the Albany Parks and Recreation Summer Performance Series in Review, and this is giving some good statistics for the Veterans Day of the summer. It's also what the Parks Department uses to solicit sponsorships for the next, next summer series, so I'd encourage you to take a look at that. The next thing, Mayor, I would love if you would help me present this, but if you could present that, and this is a certificate of excellence that was presented to Albany, Oregon for exceeding the standards established by the International City and County Management Association in the Identification and Public Reporting of Key Outcome Measures, Surveying of Both Residents and Employees and the Pervasiveness of Performance Management and the Organization's Culture. And this plaque was presented at the 104th ICNA Annual Conference in Baltimore, which both Jorge and I had the opportunity to attend on the 26th of September this year, and I'll ask, Mayor, that you present that to Jorge, since he's the driving force behind performance management here.
Yep, isn't that nice? Yeah. Good job. Thank you.
It's the city's effort, I'm just kind of helping lead it, but it's not, it's just, I'm just part of it.
Characteristic community.
You got a place to put that on, on your "I love me" wall?
I love you. Okay, is that it? And staff, have anything else? Marilyn, have any? Okay, okay, well, thank you, folks. We are now going to be going into executive session, so I have a little script to read. Sorry it takes a while. The city council will now meet in an executive session for the purpose of discussing labor negotiations pursuant to ORS 192.6602D. Representatives of the news media and designated staff and other persons shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room at this time.